All right, good evening and welcome to the special meeting, oh my god, that's a huge echo, special meeting of the Federal City Council. We've got a couple of study sessions and would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, well, let's go ahead and get right into it. We've got a study session for the city center access study. First of all, a staff presentation from the city traffic engineer Rick Perez. Then we're going to hear from our consultant John Perlich from Parametrics. Then we'll open up citizen comment and then open it up to further council comments. I would note that after both Rick Perez, or actually your counsel, obviously, anytime you had a question, like I have to tell you this, but if you've got a question during the presentation, feel free to ask it and then we'll all ask again once Rick gets done. Rick, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and counsel. Here tonight to talk about the city center access project, which some of you may recall, we've looked at in the past. And it goes back all the way to the 1990 interim comprehensive plan where we identified the need for improved access to the freeway to provide improved mobility within the city and surrounding communities. The 1995 comprehensive plan called out a little bit more specifically the four HOV access improvements, interchange improvements, and extending South 312th Street across I-5. So in 2003, we added the city center access study to the six-year transportation improvement plan. That access study was completed between 2004 and 2006, which then we moved into the environmental process in 2007. When we narrowed it down to a couple different alternatives, the counsel at that time selected the no-action alternative. And that was due in part to community opposition to the idea of an interchange at 312th Street and impacts to Steel Lake Park. We also had the issue with the 324th option being opposed by a large landowner on the east side of the freeway. The Great Recession then affected the need for the project and we removed the city center access project from the TIP in 2010. We added the environmental analysis back to the TIP in 2016 and the city has funded and restarted the environmental phase of the project this last year. So if you take a look at the volumes down here at the bottom of this graphic, you'll see that the recession reduced traffic volumes on 320th and they've gradually increased since then and actually are probably going up a little bit steeper right now, but we'll have new counts this year to document that. But we are seeing increased congestion in the corridor and as a result, the time is right for us to take a look at this again. So a bit of background here in terms of what we're proposing on the land use side. The city center consists of this area roughly between 312th, 11th place, 324th, and I-5. This portion in blue is designated the core, which is intended for the most intense development. And on the east side of that is the 320th interchange. So, and there's a fair amount going on and proposed to go on. So we have the new Performing Arts and Events Center. Town Square Park has been constructed. We have the existing transit center. In the city center core, we allow for mixed-use development with buildings up to 200 feet high currently. Other developments in the city center area, we have completed a complete streets ordinance back with our updated bicycle and pedestrian master plan that was done about four years ago. A couple of years ago, we completed the planned action SEPA for the city center core and town center developments, which intends to streamline the development review process for development that is consistent with that plan in the city center. And we have since adopted an economic development strategy with an emphasis on the town center concept. And this whole area is a designated regional growth center consistent with Puget Sound Regional Council regional plans. So, and then of course, we also have things like sound transit coming in with light rail. So what the future is looking like, on the left here, we have kind of showing the size of the circle here is commensurate with the anticipated increase in employment in certain parts of the city. And so you can see that a large part is designated in the, is planned to occur in the city center area. So right now, looking at the table here, we're talking about an increased citywide of 15,000 population and of that 15,000, a third of that is planned to be in the city center core. Employment increasing about 15,000 citywide and roughly a quarter of that is planned to be within the city center. So we're trying to anticipate what our transportation system needs to look like in order to accommodate that level of development. Comparing to another comparably sized designated regional center, downtown Bellevue, this is their downtown area. They started off with the project Northeast Eighth, then they built an interchange at Northeast Fourth, and then they had the direct access HOV ramps at Northeast Sixth. By comparison, we have a similar area and these graphics are actually from our planned action SEPA here. And anyway, so we have the 320th interchange and we do have the direct access ramp at 317th, but basically, one interchange cannot support the level of development that's planned. So again, a little bit of comparison, what Bellevue looked like in 1960 compared to 2011, and then what federal, downtown Federal Way looked like in 1970s, and what it looks like right now. So we are on a path, under the comprehensive plan, to strive towards what Bellevue's looking like. We probably won't get quite to that level, but we're going to need that access in order to accommodate that level of development. So I'm going to turn it over to John Perlich. He's with Parametrics and he actually led the team when we did the access study in 2004 through '06 and actually the environmental process in '07. So anyway, so we will, we were glad to be able to hire his team again for consistency and background knowledge on the project and I'll turn it over to John. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. Okay, so back in '04-'06 timeframe, the graphic on the right is a little hard to see, but we used a funneling process to get a large number of alternatives, 47, that we started with, narrowed down to three alternatives that include, and Rick mentioned these earlier, the no-build and access at 312th and an access at 324th. So spending a little time on 312th, some of you that were around reviewing the project back then may remember this, but important thing to remember, and this is more of a WashDOT, FA Federal Highways Administration, they don't like new interchanges on the interstate system. So part of how we are designing this project, they will have braided ramps with the 320th interchange. So that's what's shown here. So you exit the freeway and enter the freeway at one point, the ramps from both locations come together before you enter onto the freeway. So that's the 312th option. And then the 324th option is the same, it's got the braided ramps. So if they're, the 324th is just too close to that 320th interchange to have separate ramp, ramps, the weaving between the interchanges would be, there's not enough distance in there, so that's why we have to do the braided ramps. So that, that's, and these interchanges also included some local improvements to make sure they worked at the interchange as well as feeding into the city street system. So Rick mentioned this earlier, but in '09, the project was put on hold, city council voted to approve the no-build alternative due to the conflict with a large property owner on the east side of the freeway for 324th, Weyerhauser at the time, and then community opposition to the 312th alternative. The access decision point report was not finalized, so the access point decision report is a federal process that Washington DOT also uses. It's a process that you have to go through to get that approval for a new interchange on a freeway system. And also, the environmental documentation was not finalized at that time. So fast forwarding to a couple of years ago, 2016, project was added to the transportation improvement plan, but we're in a situation where data that we worked on almost 10 years ago now is a bit stale. We've had a couple of meetings with our stakeholder group, they were questioning some of the data, so a lot of the data has to be updated. So as Rick mentioned, we were hired to re-initiate the project, the study team is in place, and the study team is a broad team, I'll get into that in a minute. Since '09, when the project was put on hold, WashDOT has developed a new process called practical design. And it dovetails with the interchange justification report and the environmental process, so it's not a new thing that's adding additional time to our study process, but it is something that where DOT is focusing on least cost solutions and providing the most benefit. Our schedule, we've got about 18 months laid out here. We got started late last year, had a couple of meetings with our study group. The next couple of months, we're in a process of going through some of the old work, validating the alternatives analysis, the screening process that went on to get back down to one or two alternatives. You can see a couple of open houses and we particularly want to get your input on our outreach process. We want to have broad outreach and input into this process. So we plan to do an open house in April and another one in July. So April would be to review alternatives and the July would be to present the public with a draft preferred alternative that obviously counsel would be briefed prior to that open house to get your input as well. And then we want to select a preferred alternative in the summer and then move into the three parallel bars that you see there, the environmental documentation, preliminary engineering, and the interchange justification report. That process will take a good part of a year to complete, so we hope to be wrapped up there in fall of 2019. So the large, and our next meeting is actually tomorrow morning in this room, we have a broad list of agency stakeholders that are participating, the city, obviously, and then federal highways, King County Metro with their transit function, the King County Roads. Michael Shoe Indian Tribe has been invited because of natural resource issues in the corridor. We're participating, obviously, Pierce Transit, Puget Sound Regional Council, Sound Transit, and then some of the emergency providers and WashDOT. So we've got probably 25 to 30 people that are participating in these meetings. We've got WashDOT headquarters as well as Northwest Region staff involved, they're key to the decision. Federal Way cannot move forward with this project without approvals from WashDOT and FHWA, so we need to work closely with them. So the public involvement plan, briefly, we have a subconsultant on board, PRR, who was involved in the last phase. They're very familiar with projects in the city, the diverse community that you have. Our goals for the public involvement are going to be to promote an understanding of the purpose and need for the project, making sure our communications are clear and very accessible. We do plan on printing meeting materials and some of our project information in multiple languages. We, so our process will be one to build informed consent. We know we're not going to make 100% of the stakeholders happy with the alternative that we select, but we want to make sure that people understand the pros and cons of the project, the environmental impacts, all the benefits, and make sure that there's a clear understanding before a decision is made. We'll be managing risk and throughout the process and in our outreach process, I mentioned the public meetings, but we're also starting off, we wanted to have this meeting with counsel first, but right after this, we're going to launch into a series of stakeholder interviews with some of the key people in the city that will have a stake in this decision. We'll be doing neighborhood briefings with some of the community service, public service groups, as well as community groups in the city. We'll have business outreach with Chamber and Commons Mall, obviously, and some of the other businesses in city center area. We plan on taking advantage of some of the summer festivals and fairs that happen and have a booth or a table at those events in the summertime. And then open houses. And we, for the open houses, we'll have the physical come to the meeting, open houses probably in this room, that will have boards and everything to view and take comments, but we'll also be repeating that information in an online format. So citizens can access that information at their leisure, fill out a short survey and express their opinions on the alternatives and the information that we present that way as well. Okay, so that's what we had for a presentation, we're happy to answer questions.
Counsel, any question? Deputy Mayor, Deputy Mayor Honda?
Thank you. We sound like we're all sick up here. On the list of stakeholders, should sound transit be included since there'll be a property owner downtown?
They are part of our study team, so they're automatically included as a stakeholder that way, but yes, they are definitely a clear stakeholder.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, Ms. Resafadasa?
Yeah, thank you. So with the project timeline, you have the three parallel, going parallel, the three processes. Can you explain to me how that works then? Because you have the environmental documentation, preliminary engineering, and interchange, what is it? Justification report.
Interchange justification report.
So how do all three go in parallel? How does that work?
We have a much more detailed schedule that details out the subtasks in each of these three main categories. This is a high-level summary schedule. So what we need to do, once preferred alternative is identified, we will get our design team involved to lay out that alternative so we know the extent of the impact. We call it a footprint design, so we know exactly how far the improvements go, so we can do our environmental work. We know, with that design information, we'll be able to assess the impact to wetlands, other natural resource areas, as well as the physical environment, knowing exactly where everything lands. Parallel to that is the interchange justification report, which entails a lot of the traffic analysis. FHWA and the DOT will make sure that the, this new interchange does not compromise or impact traffic flow on the freeway worse than it already is. And as many of you know, it's, there's a lot of congestion out there already, but they're going to be looking at that. So a lot of these work activities, just they, they're not, they're sequenced in a way where we're just leaving some detail out. So, does that make sense?
So they don't intersect in any way? They're all working like three different?
No, they do intersect. There is a lot of interrelation. We need the design work to assess the environmental impacts, we need the design work to do the traffic analysis, so they're all interrelated, but they're just shown as three parallel bars on this.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, counsel, any other questions? All right, thank you very much. All right, so counsel, any comments or other questions?
What time's the meeting tomorrow?
Meeting tomorrow? City clerk? Or actually, what time's the meeting tomorrow?
We're starting at nine and going till one. So we're going to cover a lot of ground, hopefully. And it's fairly technical stuff, so yeah, it's, I mean, there's some policy issues definitely being discussed too, but you know, they're from, tend to be from a technical perspective, but anybody's welcome to join.
Okay. Counsel, anybody else? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. I wasn't on council when this came up before with the 312th interchange, but it, the stakeholders' list includes supporters of Steel Lake Park. Do you still have a list of those people that were involved? Is that?
Yes, we do. And yeah, before we were structuring that a little bit differently, we had a stakeholder committee that met regularly throughout the project. We chose not to go down that path again for a couple of different reasons, but instead we wanted to get, you know, into the stakeholder interviews kind of offline so that people didn't get polarized in positions in front of each other and we could get more frank discussion, one-on-one.
All right, thank you.
Anything else, counsel? All right, thank you very much, good work. Thank you very much for the work that's being done. Okay, now, number four, briefing, Poverty Bay Shellfish Protection District. We've got, first we'll do staff presentation and then we're going to hear from John Taylor, Assistant Division Director, King County Department of Natural Resources.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Honda, members of council. Thank you for fitting us in on the special session agenda this evening. My name is Mindy English and I am the Surface Water Coordinator with the City of Federal Way. We are joined this evening by Todd Hunstover, Water Quality Planner III with King County, along with John Taylor, Assistant Division Director with King County Water and Land Resources Division. The City of Federal Way has a number of watersheds, including Redondo, Cold Creek, and Lakota Creek, which all drain into Poverty Bay. And Todd and John will be presenting this evening on the Poverty Bay Shellfish Protection District. So, thank you.
John, do you get all that on a business card?
Yeah. It's enormous. Thanks very much for having us here tonight. First off, I just want to say this, really pleased to be here, this has been a great effort with your city staff, Mindy's been great, and city staff has been incredibly responsive on everything we've been working on, very good partners, on what is fundamentally a regional problem. So Poverty Bay, you're very familiar with because it's right off of the coast of your jurisdiction. Really, the area that we're talking about, and I'll show you a map of the boundary that we're talking about in a minute, but it really affects the jurisdictions of Federal Way and Des Moines, a larger portion of Des Moines than Federal Way, but sort of this area right here. And it is an incredibly important area for a number of reasons, but in this instance, principally because there are commercial shellfish beds in Poverty Bay that are leased out by Department of Natural Resources and used primarily by the Pualup Tribe for shellfish harvesting. These are pretty productive shellfish beds in excess of about $2 million in revenue annually from them, so an important economic resource, an important cultural resource to the Pualup Tribe and of significance regionally, just as a natural resource. So this is a map of Poverty Bay and monitoring stations that are set up by the Department of Health. Department of Health does water quality sampling along here on a sort of a regular basis over the course of the year, and the areas that are red are shellfish beds that are closed commercially, and the areas that are green are areas that were open prior to September 14th of 2016. Over the course of 2015 and '16, State Department of Health started to see exceedances of their standards at these monitoring stations. So they were seeing fecal coliform bacteria in water quality samples that they took from two monitoring stations, 720 and 722, that exceeded their standards. And the consequence of that was that on September 14th, 2016, they notified the county, and the county gets notified because we're sort of the jurisdiction of record for these things, that they were conditionally closing that section of the coast, the shellfish beds, the commercial shellfish beds that are there. Conditional closure means that they are closed during the period of the year when you're most likely to see contamination from rainwater. So during the summer months and into the fall, when you get what people who are nerdy enough to be in the stormwater business like me call the first flush. So it's that first big rainstorm after the summer when lots of material has accumulated on the roads, it gets flushed out into the water, and that's when we saw big exceedances for bacteria in these shellfish beds. The consequence of that is this very dense slide, which I'm not going to read to you as a mercy to you. as a mercy to you, but it's a section of the RCW from the state that essentially says, when you have an exceedance of bacteria in shellfish beds like this, the legislative body for the county, or the legislative body for the jurisdiction, which in this case is the King County Council, has to create a shellfish protection district. These districts typically are not formed in dense urban counties. We're sort of unique in that we actually have active commercial shellfish beds in an area where there are millions of people living. Usually, where these get created are in very rural areas, where the thing that's creating the contamination is agricultural activity. So, this is sort of a unique animal that we're trying to work our way through, working with the jurisdictions that are affected. We're in a unique position because King County, as a political entity, doesn't have any real stormwater activity here, but we are responsible for creating the shellfish protection district. So, the exceedance occurred in 2016. We had 60 days to create the district. If you are any good at math, you will note that we've probably exceeded that deadline, and that's because we've been working very carefully with the jurisdictions that are affected, City of Des Moines, City of Federal Way, and two sewer districts, Lake Haven and Midway, to kind of work through these issues so that everyone's comfortable when we create the district. So, we've done a number of things in that vein, and we've done a number of things to date. We, even before the, we got the monitoring data that the district was going to be formed, we knew that was likely to happen. We had formed a technical committee. We've been working for about two years now, trying to figure out how to respond to this once the district gets created. We've gotten some grant funding to do monitoring work and pay for the coordination amongst all these jurisdictions. We've contracted with UW to do monitoring, so we've had students out doing grab samples and gathering monitoring data, so we can begin to figure out where the contamination is coming from. And we've, we'll talk more about this in a second, but we've arrived at a boundary that all of the jurisdiction's technical staff agree to, including the science staff from UW and the state agencies that are involved. We've created a closure response plan that we'll begin implementing with funding that King County is providing and some grant funding, and we've got ordinance language that we've been working with your staff and staff from Des Moines and Kent and C-TAC on. Kent and C-TAC have very small parts of this district. So, sort of talked on this, this is just, I'm not going to read everybody off on here, but these are the main entities and agencies that are involved in the technical committee that have either a statutory responsibility or their jurisdictions that are affected by the district. Really good group of people. We have some very smart technical folks from UW and from the state involved. It's been a good effort, and I think it's a, we're pretty proud of this as an example of regional cooperation on a tough issue. So, the district boundary was a major topic at the technical committee meetings. These folks were trying to figure out, given where we're seeing the monitoring data, what are the drainage basins that are actually feeding contaminants into Poverty Bay? We've moved this line around, but I think the basin boundary that we have right now, this technical boundary reflects the best thinking of people who know a lot more about stormwater and how water flows than I do. So, good thinking from UW, good thinking from your staff and staffs in the other cities, and our own stormwater services folks, and people at the Department of Health. We think this is the right district boundary. It's science-based, it follows the drainage basins that drain into the creeks where monitoring data tells us that contaminants are coming from. In that vein, where is the bacteria coming from? So, we think that it is primarily a function of stormwater. We think it is coming off of the landform. In some cases, it may be pet waste. In some cases, it may be animal waste. It may be human waste from homeless encampments. We know that we've had a few in the drainage basins that, where we saw exceedances. We are in the process of doing some genetic testing on the water quality sample, so we can figure out exactly what kind of fecal coliform it is. In some cases, it may be ruminant, meaning animal. In some cases, it may be human. And I think so, we're, one of the things that we're doing is generating more data so that we have a better sense of what's causing the contamination in Poverty Bay. And I sort of answered that second bullet. I think the last thing that you all need to be aware of is, there's really, legally under the RCW, nothing is required of Federal Way by the creation of this district. There is no responsibility that you have, there's no legal, there's nothing compelling you to do anything. Everyone who's gathered around this table at the technical committee is basically bringing their best thinking, and what we're trying to do is facilitate marshaling of existing resources from the jurisdictions that have stormwater programs and have National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permits with the State Department of Ecology, to sort of make sure that if they have education programs or source control programs, they're undertaking those activities in these basins so that we can begin to get to the answer to these questions. But it's been a really good collaborative effort to date, and my expectation is that it will continue to be a good and collaborative effort going forward. The legislation that we're going to be taking to the King County Council, really, all it does is codify that boundary map that I showed you. It doesn't set any fees, it doesn't require anything of any of the folks that live in the district. Our expectation going forward is that we have adequate resources within our budget, King County's budget, and whatever help we can get from the jurisdictions to do source control and public education, to try to wrestle this problem down to the ground. And that's sort of what this whole effort is about. So, kind of where we are at this point is, we're going to keep moving with the technical committee to figure out how to build a program that's responsive. We're pretty much there. We have an ordinance that, I would say it's more than 80% complete now. It's pretty much drafted. We've gotten comments from your staff, we've gotten comments from Federal Way, Des Moines, Kent, and C-TAC, and we've integrated them. It's been reviewed by our law department. Our intent is to sort of get a thumbs up from all the jurisdictions before we take it to the King County Council, so that we have general approval from everyone who's going to be affected by this district. And our hope is that by the end of the first quarter, we'll be ready to transmit it to the King County Council, their staff, and Councilmember Von Reichbauer, who represents Federal Way, and Councilmember Updegrove, who represents Des Moines and Kent, is aware that it's coming, so we've had conversations with them. Our expectation is, barring major concerns from any of the affected cities, that it should be a fairly easy passage of the legislation. That's really it. If there are questions, happy to answer them.
Counsel, any questions? All right, John, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mindy. Thank you. Thank you, Teresa. All right, that completes our, actually, before we go, Counsel, any other questions on that issue? All right, with that, we've come to the end of our special meeting agenda, and we are in recess until the city council meeting in one hour and 19 minutes.